All right.
Would you please join me in my double agents?
Pleasure to meet you.
We reply, United States of America, Republic, which stands one nation, united by...
Thank you.
So. Just I wanted a couple of things on the agenda.
Yeah.
The person I just emailed about the. Meeting ID is out of the country. This is the new business item B map one lot twenty seven dash seven fifty three west view so. I was gonna say can we bump them up to the beginning but just cuz I it's like three o'clock wherever he is.
Which is this one ninety?
That's that's the one that I just printed out and gave to you. So whenever they call in.
Alright.
And we can look at.
And I have a question about that whole thing. Is there a way to? Make a generic meeting and use that going forward because unfair to them. We changed that when we started tonight. So is there a way we can do a standing one? And that's always the same.
I think so. Is that are we able to?
So I don't know who does it, but somebody says it's whiteboard.
Yeah.
It's the same every time.
Yeah, so we should figure that out so that for the planning board, we can have just one meeting ID that anybody can join.
Yeah.
At any time. Yes.
Like the second, third time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
So I I.
Yeah.
Yeah, and okay, let's I'll make a note and we'll have to just connect after.
Perfect.
So we're gonna review the meet uh meeting minutes from May six.
Hello there, Wilder.
Yes. It was only oh, you know what? I think we may have looked at this last time, but Jonathan, you weren't here.
Sure.
It was only those three that were here.
And and so we we couldn't approve it because it was only you, Dan and Jenny that were here. So you're the only three that can vote on it.
Alright.
I don't know. Do you if you have any?
Do you have another copy of this for Wilder?
Oh, yes, I do.
Basically, what you want to vote on is. Removing age restrictions on that, correct?
Oh, um, there's that. There's. Thank you. Well, for the meeting minutes.
No, for the meeting minutes, is this pertinent?
No, this this is just. The two seven logical the question. In May, I guess they requested an it. Request for an extension of conditional use permit and these like, yep. And so that's it. As long as the minutes are are accurate. Um.
So you just.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So just as.
I wasn't clear on exactly what you wanted to do.
Yeah, that's what.
Do have this other piece of business coming up.
Yes, they are also on tonight's agenda.
Alright.
But. And Jenny and you are the only ones that can.
Alright.
Act.
Do I have a motion? Put me the anti Jenny.
Um, I move that we accept the minutes from May sixth twenty twenty four.
I second it.
All those in favor? All those opposed? And she don't feel great. Want us to sign this?
Um, I I'll print that one that doesn't say draft on it and I'll bring it to the next time.
Okay. Oh, we could just do it.
So right then. I know it doesn't. It doesn't. That's alright now cuz then I'll then all all of them will say draft, not say draft and this remote. I mean.
I'm cool with that.
Okay.
Alright, uh, public hearing land use ordinance amendments.
Yeah. Um. So there's a there are two people again on agenda. This is agenda. Two people from Back Meadow Heights subdivision that we if we might want to have a quick discussion on. I really is. Yeah, I think just that way we, you know, they don't need to sit through a whole public hearing if they don't want to. Uh, if that's alright with you.
That's fine, man. Yeah.
And and so what I was hoping was, you probably remember, it wasn't at the last planning board meeting. It was at the la- the one before that. Um, with Back Meadow Heights as a subdivision that there was a requirement for paving and um never was paved and lots were sold. And so now there's property owners that. And. There also were uh building permits that were issued, even though the decision says no building permit should be issued unless. Um, until the the roads paved and all of the other conditions of the approval are met. So that didn't happen. Things got sold. Um, I believe I shared with you another earlier draft of this, which is essentially an application that I put together, but is needs to come from. The residents asking to amend the. Originally approved subdivision. Uh, to one, remove any of the standards for paving. And two, um, oh, like a round turnaround was built at the end rather than a hammerhead. And so. Um, basically, I shared this with the attorney and they just got back to me. And so this this is also relatively new for the applicants. I I sent out, I think, this today. Um. And so I've spoken with one property owner via phone, another one via email. And then um I know I just spoke with Mr. Pazzo who's here. And I I spoke with with your wife. So and I know that you're here. So the. I I think the the general intention is all still to move forward with that. Though now the issue is the attorney. Had said, and it makes sense is if we're if they're going to change the subdivision. It needs a new plan needs to be drawn up and submitted to the registry of deeds so that it's legal. Problem is that there's a cost associated with that. And so I think now the question um for the that everybody that everybody who I've spoken with is who's going to pay for that? And. That's.
So the only part of it is is just that the end of the road, the hammerhead to the.
Yeah, and and I it been this is I'm still kind of trying to figure this out cuz I was just speaking with with Mr. Pazzo earlier and he. Went it out, but essentially the that hammerhead, the the roundabout, what was actually built is. I think the hammerhead is all within that area of the roundabout. So it may be that what we what we really need to do is is it may be easier to just like. Clear the area where the hammerhead is and then just say, you know, great, you've you've met the the standard rather than having to. Um. Get an engineer to redraw the lines for, I don't know, a couple thousand dollars maybe. Um. So I think that's what we gotta figure out. And that's. So if by what I will say is like, there's only there's two. Well, I don't know if there's only two options, but there's two options I see. One is redraw the lines. Um, basically get amend the subdivision plan, uh, which is gonna require a surveyor or. Build what was approved. Uh, on the plan anyway. Uh, so we have to figure out which one of those is going to be easier to do and who's going to do that. So there's nothing to approve by the planning board today. I don't know if you have any thoughts as far as solutions on this. I'm I'm, you know, all ears, but.
It just seems that if the. Hammerhead is is included within the. The route, the circle at the end that there's there's no issue.
Well, and which is. That's fine, except and I don't know exactly. I think that. The way the road is is not the way that actually is cleared. And I don't know if it's graded or what exactly was done there. Is if you go out there, there's a loop at the end. The the road loops rather than has a the actual hammerhead.
There's a little area in the middle. It's not just.
They made a color fact.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, which. And I don't know exactly how this lines up is is kind of the the issue. Um, whether or not it sounds like the hammerhead actually is within the. The turnaround. So I think what I'm what I gotta. But I'll have to what I think I'm gonna do is try and get in touch with the uh with Chief John Roberts, the fire chief, and. Ha- basically figure out is the hammerhead where it needs to be and accessible and. Does it meet their needs? Because I think that practically. As long as the residents are okay with whatever it is, as long as it meets his needs, the town, I don't think is really too worried about. You know, whether it's a hammerhead or a roundabout, the town just cares that really that fire access is at the end of the day is serviceable. So I'll talk to him, see if it's okay, see if I can't the the couple of property owners that are that are that that property, that that kind of a bu- that area. They're okay with with it and we can basically get it so that. In reality. A hammerhead is gonna be required there if we're not gonna change this, if not gonna change the drawing. But I gotta figure out whether or not.
How about instead of, you know, having any. Specific. Uh, description as to whether it's a hammerhead or a circle turnaround, just say a. You know, um, a turn, you can say a turn a turnaround at the end of the extension that's. That's acceptable to the fire chief as.
Which is.
Providing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, don't, don't. Specifically describe it, but it just has to meet the the requirements of the.
The the problem is, Jenny, though, it's already written in.
It's already described.
Of how it's supposed to be. So in order to change that, then you have to go back and it has to be redrawn.
And and it it may simply may. What's that? The hammerhead? No, that is. That's with the that's with the registry of deeds.
It is at the registry of.
Yeah, that's there. And that's why, like, it doesn't say anything on there about the paving. So we can we can roll that back. They don't know. It's it'll just be, I mean, it'll be recorded here.
I mean, the other question we asked from the board is to find out when Henry did the first phase. What the requirements of that road were.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it wasn't really well documented. So it's if. It's. But but we're also, we're we're rolling that back. I mean, whatever the requirements were, we are saying. We're not holding. That's that, I think we can move forward with and say, we're not gonna hold you to the paving requirements that are.
I understand that. The question, um, the question is. What were the requirements?
We don't know. They weren't.
We don't know.
They weren't recorded, so.
So the first part of the subdivision. Never was finished. That was only a base coat. And then you're asking the second part of the subdivision. You required it to be completed with a base coat and a finish coat.
Well, that's what we're changing.
Which I understand that. So. We don't know what the requirements were from the planning board for the first phase, and yet you impose something.
No, that's what he's saying. That's what you're not getting is. We don't care what the road's made out of, right? And it doesn't matter for the second section because he said, we're not gonna hold to that. The thing in question is the turnaround. Yeah.
The one that met with John Roberts that said.
Right. And then.
Would you rather have a turnaround? Or?
And I think that which is which is fine. And that's this is the kind of the issue is that I don't know if it was, and I had some emails, you know, Stan said, yeah, okay, this is fine. John said it's fine. Problem is, is like, none of that really matters legally until somebody gets a plan and gives it to the registry of deeds that's signed by the planning board. None of that really matters. You know, everybody can have the conversations. It's just the only people that have the authority to change the subdivision. Are is the planning board. So either we need to have something new for the planning board to sign that basically says, yeah, fine, roundabouts, okay? Or we need to do something that basically meets the current plan. That's in the registry of deeds that has a. Hammerhead.
Does he understand that?
I I'm I'm I I think so. But so but if we go with the first one, Mike.
You understand that if you. Change it from a hammerhead. Roundabout, do you have to redraw the plans?
Yes. Like, who's gonna pay for it?
Right. That's what we're just talking about.
Right. And so now, and so that's. That's why I it maybe cuz it sounds like the hammerhead is clear. So and I I don't know, you know, this is if if the fire chief goes out there and says, yep, this area is clear. Maybe it just needs to be like grass taken up or something. And the hammerhead, so the hammerhead can can. You know, that's fine. The property lines in a hundred years, someone can go back there and basically say, yep, here's where the road is, even though it, you know, it may be. You know, there's not walls. It's, you know, it's kind of informal, but as that area is clear and a fire truck can turn around in there. That's all that the town cares about. I just wanna make sure that that is. That that's. Okay. That that's good. And as long as as long as Chief Roberts care, you know, is says, yes, good, that area where they're supposed to be, that te- that hammerhead is. Serviceable, then we're good. No, I'll I'll talk to him. This this all this came up. I've spoken with him and I know he knows what, you know, the roundabout there is fine, the but. So I just but I just need him to go out and confirm that, yes. This is okay. He can live with that cuz I don't think that's one thing that the town, I don't think we're gonna. You know, we wanna drop is making sure that that fire safety is addressed in a subdivision. Everything else, as long as the residents are are. Basically, I just wanna get it to a point where the residents, what they want is acceptable, as long as the planning board, you know, finds it acceptable. That's what I'm trying to do is just get. You all to a point where the town can issue building permits and. There's no weird legal entanglements for you if you wanna sell or build or whatever you wanna do with your property.
The purpose of the survey would be if the fire chief goes out and says, okay, yeah, this looks good.
It's the survey, it really is just for recording. It's not and and again, and I I I had an email from another one of the property owners. It's not because the town wants a survey. It really is just for memorializing this and recording it with the with the. Um, registry of deeds. So that way, when when, you know, if you go to sell your property, and I don't I don't know whose lot is whose exactly, but. If someone goes to sell their property, they can go and get a survey and it'll show, yep, I come right up to the. This, um. The hammerhead there. And if someone, because if if the roundabout is going onto someone's private property and they go and say, I don't want the roundabout on my property, they can close that off, right? They could go and build a fence.
Had already been surveyed? Have we already determined where it was supposed to go?
Yeah, that was that was what was originally approved. And so the the current plan on the registry. Yeah, I think I that's what I'm thinking is is we probably can. We just need to make sure that it's there's not trees, that there's not a a anything in the way, which. That's that's I think if we can get to that, if we can go out there, I believe that it is clear, but I just don't know if it was graded, what was actually built there. I I mean, the road is really good. It's a it's a dirt road. I know it's been compacted and that. So it just needs to be able to accommodate. A fire truck in that hammerhead area. John Roberts is gonna be the person who can say, yes, that. That's good. And then hopefully we can then just.
So it's why I see too fast.
Yeah. Yeah.
One is, he goes out there and says, okay, here's the hammerhead. It's within a circle. We don't care about this circle, whatever. The circle doesn't matter. Here's a hammerhead. At that point. It's already been surveyed. Why would you need another survey?
I I if as long as we're doing, as long as we're saying, yes, the the hammerhead is what is going to be remain recorded. We don't need another survey if we if we go that route.
Okay.
If we want to say, my understanding was a roundabout was built or, you know, a round turnaround was built, but a hammerhead is what was approved. And so if you wanna keep the round turnaround, we need to update the survey. But it sounds to me like everybody is perfectly happy. Just keep saying this is. A hammerhead turnaround. And yes, there is also a roundabout that is there's a roundabout path there, but legally. That that, you know, like I said, the issue is if someone wants to block off that roundabout. They could.
They put a stone wall on the edge of their properties.
Right.
For the roundabout, they say, this is my property. There's nobody put about here.
Yeah.
As long as that hammerhead's a front event and the the fire truck turn around.
Right, then, yes, and that's. So that's what I'm gonna talk to John Roberts about. This is, I apologize. This is still kind of like baking cuz I just got this communication from the. Attorney. I think it was like Friday or Saturday. And so I'm still kind of like trying to process. So you're you're seeing me think out loud and and you're here. So. I think we can do that. I think that's that will be agreeable. Uh, to the attorney and hopefully to the fire chief. And if that's the case, then no survey will be needed. We will roll back the paving requirements and. I will get uh this letter. That I've written on on behalf of the property owners to the slop to the planning board at the next meeting. Yes, and I'll I'll update it. I will share it with you all. Hopefully, we can get that approved at the next meeting. And all we're really gonna be doing is rolling back the paving standards. And then. And then all of the um, all of the subdivision approval requirements, conditions will, will hopefully be met, and then all of this is done. That's, that's the plan. I'm hoping that that we can, we can make that work.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, it's, it's just as long as the, that hammerhead area is clear and functional, then great. It's, does that, I mean, I, I obviously will have to check with the other property owner, but I'm going to, seems like that would be, that would work for at least the two of you.
Yeah, if we can, if we can do that, especially if we're going to avoid a survey, because it would really stick in my craw at the paper service.
Yeah, no, I understand.
For all of this.
Right. That's which I yes, I understand that, so I'm trying to find the least painful solution for the property, so.
We'll be painless.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Job.
Okay, so should we move to the public hearing?
Yes, so that, that's done unless you have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, so that's what we're going to do with that. Yes, I'm all set.
Steve?
Yes, um, the, the gentleman back was Richard Pozo.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then the gentleman that was in front was, uh, Robert Chase.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, we're back to the public hearing.
Yes, so then he can get back to the regularly scheduled.
I just take it as a listed.
Which I, I, I appreciate, it's been a little kind of a messy week, so. Okay, so we did that, we did that, we did that. Did that. And I don't see.
Dan, if you need to use, if you need, if this would be helpful, more helpful. Are, are you here for the for ordinance circuit? What's the red line? Because I, I have it up on my computer is what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I just got, um, emailed to me.
Okay. I, 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 it should have been posted. I did share it with, uh, with the clerk, but I'll have to, I'll have to look and see if it we've got to do it again. But we can discuss it now.
It was in the paper.
It was in the paper. Okay, so that, it was there, it just, it may not have been posted digitally. I'll, I'll check with Becky. Yeah, yeah, okay. I will, I will check. Check on that. I, I just, um, sorry, Haven, I just, I got an email from the other applicant that, 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 that meeting ID isn't working. Um, is there, is there some way you could email me a link or something that I could forward to him? Is that something you know how to do?
Which you've already started, but couldn't.
If you can figure out a way to email or invite me or something, then I can I'll, I can pass that along to him. All right, we'll see what you can do and, and we can, if you, if you can't figure it out, then maybe we can review it without them and but, um, okay, so want to do the public hearing for the
Land Use Ordinance?
And Use Ordinance, yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Your planner at Damasko.
Yep.
And Dr. Paul?
Yes. Thank you.
You want to start that now? You want to keep going with what you're doing?
No, no, I just, I we can, we can do the.
Okay, so we're going to have a public hearing on the Land Use Ordinance Amendments, LD two thousand and three.
You want me to kind of go through what the the changes are? All right, uh, um, the a lot, so, uh, let me just give you the, the, the the point of all of this is to, um, started with the state's LD two thousand and three law they passed, which requ- which kind of is, is meant to encourage housing and, and rolled back some, um, it could kind of pull back municipalities from maybe overregulating, my words, um. And so in certain areas, you have to allow for, well, you have to allow for ADUs everywhere. Um, you also have to allow for, in certain areas, if you're on uh, public utilities, pub- you know, sewer essentially, yeah, you have to be able to build another unit. And if you are within a municipality's growth area, you build, you basically get another unit. So depending on where you are in a municipality, you, you, the town has to allow, uh, up to four units in certain areas, up to three in other areas. And essentially, you have to allow two units everywhere with that ADU. There, there are some restrictions still that are in place, like shoreline zoning, you still need to meet the requirements of that. Um, and if you're on septic, you still need to be able to meet the state minimum of, I think it's like twenty thousand square feet per unit. Um, so we, we, I went in to, to try and start with that. There are plenty of other things that I'm also addressing, and I, and I, you've all seen this, um, but also added a number of definitions and tried to clean things up just so that it was a bit more consistent and um, clear, but the majority of the um, uh, the regulations that are being changed are around that LD two thousand and three ADUs or up to four units. There's also something about, um, affordable housing where, you know, essentially, you have to allow two and a half times density bonus for a like a, an actual affordable housing project. So that's all in there. Um, but I'll just run through this, and if there are any questions, we can, I'm happy to answer them. Um, I guess maybe I should say, is there anything you want to you want to me to, is there anything right now before I dive into actual changes?
Let's try to.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I won't run through all of the definitions. There were a lot of land uses that were um, in the land use table already, that I either kind of shortened up what they were referred to as, just so that it would be you know, I think for academic, like, the first definition in your academic institution had like a two-sentence kind of name for what it was. So I just, I kind of cut that down to say, academic institution is now, it's a land use, and I put a lot of that what was, what was originally in the land use table into the definition. So we also defined a number of land uses that were already allowed, but just like what really defines, which makes that a little bit tough. Um, you'll see, Damaskad already had a, um, accessory apartment, which was essentially an ADU, um, uh, section, like, we, we did allow ADUs. Didn't quite call them that, so we're getting rid of what was already in there, because there were a bunch more restrictions on there than the state would be okay with. Um, so we put that in there, uh, let's see, I, the, I did add definitions for affordable housing for owned and affordable housing for rent, um, which basically just mimic what the states or federal guidelines are, what their definitions are. Um, and that way we will have a definition there. And then affordable housing development is, um, you have to have at least fifty-one percent or more of the dwelling units in a project have to be meet those definitions of affordable, which is either eighty percent. Rent can't be too high for someone who makes eighty percent of the area median income, if it's rental, or a hundred and twenty percent of area median income if it's for sale. All right, so I won't go through all the definitions. I updated quite a few of the definitions, uh, as I kind of already said. Um, and tried to kind of consolidate what the actual names of uses were. Um, I think the other big one is for um, some of the residential uses, like went through and took out any like multifamily, it changed it to multi-unit, and single-family, changed to single-unit, um, and then basically just divided what most people think of as residential, which is either houses or apartments, into two kind of things. One is, uh, I think it's called a residence, is what essentially most people will think of as a single-family house or single-family property, but you're allowed up to four, uh, up to four units in that. So you can have a, you know, you can add a, a unit over your garage or one in your basement, and depending on where you are, the density stuff to meet, we still have density requirements or density regulation, so um, depending on the district you're in, if you have the space, you could go up to four units, and it would still be just like a residence use. Once you go to five units, it turns into what would but, most people will think of as multifamily, but it's multi-unit residential. So we can kind of regulate those two differently, depending on where we, where you want it and a, a lot of, um, some of the changes I made lay up what I assume are going to be changes coming in, you know, as the comp plan goes through, and we get a little bit more kind of direction from uh, from residents. So we could add or, or modify the multi-unit uh, requirements and standards separate from like residence standards. Um, I think those are probably the two and a big ones, um. I think that's all right, so that's definitions, um, land use districts, they all stayed the same. Um, I did, the wireless communication district was really an overlay, so I made that a bit more clear. Um, I think I, I changed the name of the C one commercial district, the downtown commercial, just for kind of clarity there. Um, the map is not changing.
Uh, under shoreline zoning, why did you say may rather than shall, in the land within two hundred and fifty feet of water bodies and wetlands and
Um.
seventy-five feet?
Really, that, that's whole section B there that you're talking about, isn't super, isn't really needed because the shoreline, the shoreline ordinance governs that. And so all of those were re- regulations and restrictions are in shoreline. So this is really, I left this in, and I just wanted to clarify, this is kind of a reference to.
Can you reference page numbers so that everybody can?
Yeah, this is page nineteen of the redlined version.
So, but, but it seems that she should just say shouts, because it is regulated by the shoreline.
Um, it, the land, land within two hundred and fifty feet of water bodies or wetlands and land within seventy-five feet of streams may also be regulated by, so the, the reason that it's may is because that's kind of a simplification of what the, the shoreline zone actually does, like not all streams are regulated under shoreline. It's, so what this really is, is just a reference that if someone's reading through this, that the, it's just to let them know, oh, by the way, we have shoreline zoning. If you go to the shoreline ordinance, it explains exactly what authority it has, and this isn't like abridging that. It's like, it, it, we don't need to mention shoreline anywhere in this ordinance, and the other one still is in force, if that makes sense. Um, all right, so district regulations. Um, a lot of this is, I, I, what I tried to do, if you're looking at the redlined version, um, the purple is just moved from somewhere else and maybe edited, so when you see those sections, they'll have like a lot of purple, it, it's just it's generally not new, and it's mostly just my attempt at clarifying. Um, so like the uses which are accessory to a permitted use are permitted, and uses which are accessory to a conditional use are conditional, like that was kind of said somewhere else, just not quite that specifically. Um, oh, we the, um, there was not, I don't think there was a, either a medical district, or there wasn't a medical column in the land use table. So I added a column for that district. Um, so that's new, but again, those, the, the map isn't changing, it was already on the map. And I re kind of reorganized it a bit, so that all the residential uses are together and up at the top, um, which hopefully will just be easier for anybody who's referencing this. Um, so there's that. Um, trying to see if I see. We, I did take multi-unit residential out of the rural district. Um, and did add it into the general residential. Not sure why it was in the rural district. You can still, you can do, you know, you can put forty units on a on a lot, you just need two acres per unit. So the density hasn't changed, it's just not allowed to do apartment buildings basically in the rural. You can still put all those units if you wanted to. Um, yep, yep.
What about the, um, you know, the property on the Bristol Road?
Yeah.
For sale, is, is that within the?
That's in the general residential.
Just general residential.
And this would allow, it would be a conditional use, but you could put apartments in there under this. You, you're going to need probably, I mean, to say nothing of the work, you need to have enough space for the septic, and you still need to meet the density requirements of the che- of the general residential district. Um, they do have a big chunk of property, so they probably could fit apartments in there. Um, but, so right now, you, you, you can't, you can't really do anything.
So make that property more.
Hopefully, yes, you know, I can't, it will, it will make it probably, um, more likely that it will could be turned into housing. My understanding is, it's, it needs a lot of work, so I don't know if the the work that it needs is going to be justified by, but at least the ordinance isn't going to stop them from.
So does.
Yeah, yeah. Um, if that does happen, it is a conditional use, so it would have to come before the planning board. Um, uh, and I, I'll just say, there are a number of uses that came out of the land use table, but it was kind of like, um, there was a, there were two, there was like a veterinary facilities excluding kennels and humane societies. And what I tried to do was, like, if the general use was allowed, like a veterinary clinic is allowed where veterinary clinic veterinary facilities excluding kennels and humane societies. I basically put some of those restrictions that are in there. I took them out of the land use table and put them down in the, as a section for land uses. And it'll say, like, you know, um, kennels are allowed in the rural, veterinary clinics are also allowed in the rural and in the C two. So it just, just try, try to clean some of that up, so that it was the land use table says where you're allowed to do land uses. If there's like little variations or other restrictions, those aren't in the land use table. They're, they're further in like the actual standards for, like a veterinary clinic, um, further down. Um, or I, or I broke some of them up, like I know there was one was like, um, oh, arts and craft studios, antique shops and galleries was just one. I broke that into artisan workshop, antique shop, art gallery defined those. Um, again, just so that you have a little more control of where you want them. Um, I left them as allowed for everywhere that they were already allowed. Um, did not touch the marijuana stuff. I did take off, there were, there were like a little, um, there was a note on all of them, I just that note is still I just moved where the note, where the restrictions are. Um, that's probably and then, uh, uh, okay, so then the other big thing is, there's, there's now, I think like three chapters. One is use standards followed by um, lot standards, followed by the building standards, building and structure standards.
So it's page twenty-seven.
And on, yeah, so, uh, on the redlined one. And so essentially, and, and I think I've kind of explained it was if there are, you, if there are standards and restrictions tied to uses, if you go to the use section, the, the, you know, one of one point six use standards, that's where we list all of the standards that apply by use. Um, and I started with conditional standards, then I put the residential standards, and then the non-residential. I broke those out, I just think most people are looking at residential. That's what they, they come for, and if they're, if they're not, you know, it's all, you just have to go a little bit further down. Um, I pretty much tried not to remove anything. I just tried to clear, you know, clean it up. Um, there, you kind of explained the residence use versus the multi-unit. Um. Non-residential standards. Um.
Why can't you do agriculture in general, general residential?
Uh, I probably because it wasn't in there before, um. Let me see, where is? You're talking about the, um, in the land use table, I assume, yeah.
Just, I just.
Where is that? Is that under?
Twenty-three, page twenty.
Natural resources. Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't change those. Those were, it's permitted in rural and then conditional and C one and C two. You know, uh, just how it was before. So. That's a conversation, I think. Um, the, I think there are a number of, of uses that either should or shouldn't be allowed. We, we should have that conversation, but that's.
When, when is it, when?
When would we have that? Uh, my thinking is, once we have the comprehensive plan through, we would, we can start having those bigger conversations. Cause I think.
There'd be more amendments to this.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Uh, uh, that stuff, my thought was like, this is really LD two thousand and three, and then anything else that just seemed like. It's our, I'm, if it's already cracked, I may as well mess with it, but those kinds of questions of like, should we allow this use in that area? Um.
Down the road.
I, I, I want the, the public and residents to be a bit more involved, so, um. So that's why I didn't, I didn't. Change that. Um. Okay, so. Use standards, most of the standards that were already existing are probably still just in the use standard section. There just wasn't a section called use standards before. Um. Uh, and then there's lot standards, which is, I think, familiar to everybody with the, um, dimensional standards. That is on, if you're looking at the redlined one is on page thirty-four. That, that table which shows you, you know, how much, what your density is for, if you're on sewer, if you're not, how much frontage you need. Um, there, I cleared that up. Um, and I, I, one thing that I did do was. The dimensional standards before it essentially, it kind of mixed. It mixed density and the lot standard. So. Now, if you look at this, it'll tell you what the minimum lot area is, just in the, for, for example, in the, um, general residential, ten thousand square feet. That's what the minimum lot area was, but what, I think what it said before was. Minimum lot area is ten thousand square feet per dwelling unit or a principal building. Now it's just ten thousand square feet. If you have, if you have a lot that's ten thousand, if you can't create a lot that's less than ten thousand square feet. You, you couldn't have before, you still can't.
Doesn't have to be sewed?
Uh, it does not have to be sewed. You can have a ten thousand square foot lot in general residential. But if you want to. You, if you want to have a, um, if you want to put a dwelling unit on a lot, you still need. One acre per dwelling unit. So it's, you could potentially create a lot, you can't put a dwelling unit on, but that doesn't, doesn't mean you can't do anything with it. There are other things you can do. Um. And, and general residential is a little bit of a weird one because. It, some of it is sewed and some of it's not. So, you know, you could put, if you're on sewer, you can put nine units. Per acre.
Okay, I see, yeah.
So if you have ten thousand square feet in the general residential. Like you can, you can, and you're on sewer, you can, you can do stuff, you can do plenty with it. Um, this is another area where like, once we get the comprehensive plan through and approved. We might want to revisit this. It may be, it might make sense to, to have another, to like split up the general residential. Area because there's a good chunk of it is on sewer and there's a good chunk of it that's not. It may be that it should be two different districts.
So, so the forty. The forty dwelling units per acre in the C one.
C one, yeah.
Is that new?
That is, um, because there actually was no density standard in the C one in the last version.
That's pretty high, it seems.
It's so, it, it does when you think about like, oh, forty units on an acre and I, and I went to do the, the math on it. It's like, when you actually work it, when you actually like go and worked this out to say like, all right, if you had, um. Well, like an eighth of an acre, four, three, five, six, I'll just run this math very quickly right now. Um. You. Um. And I can't do it because I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm in the meeting and you're watching me, but, um. So.
Stage fright.
Basically, if you had an eighth of an acre, you can put, you could put five units on it. And so that's like, if you have an acre, like, yeah, forty units in one building on an acre, it would be a big thing. There are no one acre lots, but there might be one. And it's not, it's not like you couldn't create a one acre lot, but in the downtown, most of the lots there are much smaller than that. They're like five, ten, maybe fifteen thousand square feet. You know, so which is, you know, eighth, maybe a quarter of an acre. So in order to say like, yeah, sure, you can, like if you. So, and the way that I got to that forty was I went and looked at like the day block and I, I looked at some of the other buildings that are down there. And if you really like, if you were to work out what density they're at, the density is like crazy. It's probably like a hundred units an acre or something because. They, it's, most of those lots are just the building footprint. Pretty big. Um. So that's where that forty came from. Uh, it's probably, that's probably lower than what a lot of the buildings are at right now, but sounds. Big, um. Which, well, we can eventually have another conversation, cause I know scale has come up in, in the conversations we've had before and it's all about, um. You know, you, you probably wouldn't, you, you could put that density in a lot of places and it would depend on. How tall the building is, how wide the building is, you know, but things like that, that we can regulate. Eventually we should probably get there. Um. And we, so when we do, and we do have some of those, right? We still have, you know, forty foot height limit, um, things like that. So. Um. All the dimensional standard setbacks and everything are under this, uh. Section one of one point six lot standards. So that's where you're going to find all of that. Um. That's where the affordable housing density, I put that in there. What, and. Anything that's, that is in here for affordable housing is basically just came from what the state requires. Um. Undersized lots, I did make sure that, um, you know, this came up before, if you, if you have a lot that is legally existing. Um, and is less than whatever the. Whatever the density requirements are, or whatever the lot standards are. You're, you're still allowed to put a house on it. So like, if you were to create a new lot, like for example, in the general residential, if you were to create a lot that was. Ten thousand square feet and you need an acre, so if you, if you were to create a quarter of an acre lot. In the general residential and you need an acre, cause you're not on sewer to put a, a house on it. If you create that lot new, you couldn't put a house on it. You could do something else with it. If you already have, like today, if you have a quarter acre lot in the general residential. Um. And there's no sewer on it, you could still put a house on it. Assuming you can plummet and I, and I won't get into all the plumbing standards because I don't know them, that's the plumbing inspector. But essentially we're not, if, we're not going and saying. You've got an undersized lot that already exists. You can't do anything with it now. We're saying, look, if you've got an undersized lot, you'd still do something with it. You can build, you know, a house on it. But you, you, you can't, you can't create a new lot and, and do that. So we're, we're making sure we're not kind of taking anything from anybody. Um. I think, let's see, building standards, the building standards is accessory dwelling unit. That's where I kind of put that because. It's kind of a building type, ADU, um. Happy to go through that, but it's basically just whatever the state said. In most districts, you're allowed, you could do two ADUs. In the rural, you can't, you still, you can just, you can do the one, that's what the state requires. Um, still got the retail size cap in there. Um. Yeah, and then, um. Changed the name of section one of one point seven, but it's, that's the adult entertainment establishments, didn't touch that. That can be, we can address that later if desired. Um. Oh, and then I did, we did restructure the fees. But what we did in here, it listed out what the fee schedule was. What I've done is. We list in here what we can charge fees for and we're going to kick the actual setting of the fees to the select board. So that way we can update them and change them as needed without having to do a whole ordinance, uh, update.
That's really good.
I think that'll be. That'll be easier. Um. So that's that. Um. I did take in under section one of one point nine appeals and variances, or at least what it's called now. Um, that is page fifty-seven of the redlined. I just moved the, um, conditional use language that was in here up to the use standards. Cause that's really what it was addressing was conditional use. Standard. So this is just appeals and variances, which are, I mean, if you're on the board, like, you know. Getting variances and appeals kind of goes separate from the planning board. That goes to the appeals board and. That's a whole separate thing, but conditional uses come through you. So it seemed like it was, made sense to have that separate. And. And that's pretty much it. Um. That's everything. Obviously, we didn't go through word by word, but, um, I am happy to continue on, uh, or answer any questions that you might have.
Ken, you have any questions?
No, I was really very interested in, in the LV two thousand and three and, and what we were going to do with that. And, and, and was also very interested in, in how I was going to link into the comprehensive plan discussion later on. But what I'm hearing is that, that's basically going to get pushed off until such time as the comprehensive plan is approved. And then, then we'll start to really dig into that piece.
Well, I mean, the LV two thousand and three stuff is, is taken care of in this.
Right.
We're in. Yes.
Minimum requirements are all included in these.
Yeah, and, and I, we did go a little bit above to try and make housing easier. I, I. What I'm hoping is, um, that what we can eventually get to is that like residence uses. This is one of the reasons that I kept residence uses like the four or less units. Um, separate from the multi-unit is so that we can hopefully get, assuming everybody's on board with this, obviously. Is that anything that's four or less, uh, units can just go through code enforcement review. You want to add an ADU, you want to add an apartment in your basement or whatever, code enforcement can, can, can do that. And essentially it's still just like what most people think of as a single family house.
What, four additional units?
No, up, up to forty units. You can have four.
That's, that's actually, that's a.
It's, so it, it is, and, and depending on where you're talking, that's what we have to allow anyway. Um, and again, we've got density standards, so it's not like you can just put four units anywhere you want. You still have to have a certain amount of size, a certain amount of area, and those haven't really changed. Um. So that, that's part of the reason that I, that I tried to kind of create that delineation so that it wasn't just like all residential. Any size is regularly, regulated the same. Because one of the bigger barriers to housing is like coming before the planning board is, it's not a terrible thing. It just is, it's a, it's harder than just going through code enforcement. Um, and so what I would like to do, and this is part of the conversation we have with the comp plan, so I didn't want to go all the way this way, but. Um. Was trying to define what standards the community wants and accepts, like what kind of development does the community want? Make it as easy as possible to do that. What is the stuff that the community doesn't want? And basically make it as difficult as possible to do that. And then anything in between is what we have to kind of figure out, but for the most part, people seem to be okay with. You know, an extra, an ADU, or you know, you want to call it granny flat or an in-law suite or whatever it is. Most people are okay with that. And don't really notice it because, you know, garage, you don't know if the second story is empty, your storage or an apartment. Um. So that's, that's going in that direction and I. Tried to make it as, as simple as possible by giving a little bit more to, um, by giving a little more flexibility, flexibility than LD two thousand and three requires to that stuff. But multifamily, I think is, I don't want to open that can of worms until we start doing like real, solid public outreach. Um. So.
Yeah, no. To your question, you know, part of it just that you gave us all the news as well, because it's really the building blocks of, of a, really of a housing policy in town. And yeah, the one thing we've heard loud and clear on the conflict and it's that housing is probably central to, to the. Really to the economic future of the town, because people can't afford to live here, then you've got all sorts of issues with. For, you know, where are the workers going to come from? And, and then you start seeing this, we were talking about it the other day, this hollowing out of the community too. If, if only rich people come here and buy a house, then that's a problem as well. So, um, so it's a big issue.
Yeah.
And, and this is really.
It's a start.
It's a start, but it's also one of the foundation pieces of the housing policy.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I did with the, breaking out the land use, uh, chapter and the, um. Buildings and structures and I, one of the things I was trying to do was even if I'm not changing the, uh, actual standards. Just create a structure that then we can, we can kind of slide things in, that it makes it easier to. Address the kinds of things that I'm sure, that, that I know are in the comprehensive plan, so that it's just a look, it's a cleaner, you want to. Add a new use in here or take a use out. It's there. You want to add building standards to certain things, great, we can do that without. Breaking other, other stuff. So it just hopefully is a little bit of a cleaner, more manageable structure. Um, so we can have those future conversations.
You know, I like your thought and your plan and you've done.
Good.
Very nice.
Thank you. Well, I mean, when we have discussed this, so some of, plenty of this is not just my.
Oh, no, no, you're good.
So.
Good.
Um. Good. After, I, I will make sure that we met whatever requirements we have for the public hearing, but. We have to have another public hearing, we, we can't. Um.
Is this, is this going to be voted on?
This, yeah, this has to go to, uh, I don't know, I don't know exactly when it does need to go to select board and go through the whole. Um, town, town meeting, special town meeting. I don't think it's going to go on the ballot, but that's, that up to the select board, I think. Yeah. Yeah.
Items on the board.
Cause I think this comprehensive plan. I can't remember. Oh, I think there's some shore, uh, not shoreline, shellfish. Or notes changes too. So that may just be like another special town meeting. But I think that's still being determined.
Hmm, but I think. Whether it's December, January, that could, that could.
So, so. We had talked about, um. Well, I guess, I guess there'll be more changes later, you know, after that.
Yes, I, and I, I've been talking with Andy and, um, about changes to like subdivision and site plan and all of that to try and.
Even just, you know, the, the renting, um. Temporary rentals.
Oh, short term, yeah. Yeah.
Cause that's, that's ties in with the whole housing availability.
Yeah.
Issue.
And that's, that's the stuff that I, I think that the community is going to want to be involved in the, the conversations and. Want to make sure that there. Plenty of opportunities for input. Yeah, yeah. So no, there's, this is not done being fixed. We're gonna, we'll continue to work on it. Um. I know that, and this is kind of up to you all, the, the. The, um, fifty-three Westview Road.
We have to close the public hearing.
We do, sorry, yes.
Anybody in the public got anything to say? I guess we can officially close this public meeting, public hearing, excuse me.
Okay, great. Um. I'll call it Andy and I guess we'll probably bring it to the select board and. We'll move it forward. Um.
Like to move down to the Westview Road?
Yeah, you know, I know that applicant's not here. I think that if you all want to review it and it's, and I know that. You know, it's not.
I mean, you said they're in Europe, right?
They, they're in, I think they're in like Kazakhstan or one of the.
That could be like.
Very early.
Yeah.
Like three o'clock in the morning, so.
So it's on Houston Cove.
It is. It is, is that what the, it's off of that point there? Yeah.
So and 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 they already, they already built it.
So this is, you know, I don't know exactly what what the situation was. This started, this came to me when George was here. Essentially, there, there was a pier and, you know, dock and float and stairs there that got damaged in the storm in January. I don't know, basically George came to me and said, this was, this has never been approved. It was never an original approval. So I said, all right, well, we can take it to the planning board. Yeah, and the one before this, the original one.
Because Bill Caldwell had it down.
And so, so this is where I I said, like, I don't know if it was, and there's some old pictures of like the stairs from years ago. So, you know, there was a dock, there definitely was a dock there, you know, no one's denying that. I'm just taking it through the like new dock, the new permit application because it's like there was no record of any approval and George said, this is going to the planning board, so I don't have any record of approval. Well, and it got damaged, so he needs to rebuild it.
When they rebuild it, they're going to rebuild it differently than what was there anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So is it bigger? Is it far out?
No, it's not. I mean, it's, it is, like the pictures that are in here, what you see is it's what is there. I think he he put like a I don't know, a jog in the but you know, like basically this is going to extend to your
Oh.
Still coming down.
So there's
Yeah.
It's going to stay.
So the Bureau of Public Lands has a permit, they must have a permit.
Yeah, the, the I thought I included it in here. Yeah.
It's still leased, you know, you're, you're getting
Once you get out over the water.
Once you're over the water, you have to have a state lease.
And that's
A lease?
Well, that's what, I mean, it's our land that they're building on.
You have to have a lease?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's the state.
It's a state thing. It's, it's not like a lease, like a real lease.
I didn't follow that, but
There's, yeah. It it is like you basically, I don't know if they need to rent. You know, get a, yeah, I don't know if they need to get a lease for the float out there. It probably depends on how, how far you're, because I know there are some that if your peer goes out far enough, you do have to basically get a lease to from the state to have your peer in their
So if it, if it's, if it's below the, below watermark.
Right, right. And I don't think that, I don't think that this pier goes below the, the low watermark.
So it doesn't need
The float out is out there and it has a gangway, but there, it's not a pier that's below the, so I, so that
It's all mud flats in there.
Yeah, so that's what I'm
I mean, there is no water.
Yeah, I think that's what, what he said was the, the, the float is essentially on mud when the tide's out. So, so, but, but, you know, I went through and, and you know, this mostly is just shoreline review. And if you go through the piers, docks, wharfs, bridges and other structures and uses extending over or beyond below the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland. That section, you know, I went, I went through on page two of the findings of facts that I, the draft findings of facts that I provided you, I went through item by item and says access from the shore should be developed on soils appropriate for such use and constructed so as to control erosion. I mean, if you look at the pictures of where the stairs and dock were on the land, it's all rocky, it's, it's seems like it's natural riprap. So like, that's pretty, pretty well suited for this.
And this, was it, was it rebuilt like this summer?
Uh, yes. But well, I think that he actually might be in the process of rebuilding it. I think that George kind of stopped him and said, well, you need a permit to do that. So he wants to finish.
Okay.
The location is not going to interfere with natural or developed beach areas. There's not really, you know, a real beach there.
Are there, are there shellfish leases right off there?
Uh, you mean, but the, the aquaculture stuff? No, and that was one of the things fisheries needs to be located to minimize adverse effects to fisheries. There, it's not far enough out to
Okay.
And and also that would be what DEP and but, you know, submerged lands would, would, would permit. So they would, they'll handle that. Can't be any larger in dimension than necessary to carry out the activity and it needs to be consistent with the character of the area. It, it seems like a pretty standard size. I mean, it's not, it's not a standard size, but it's a typical size.
Actually fairly small.
Yeah, it's not a particularly large.
Fairly small.
And so, so they're going to take, take up the gangway in the float, right?
You mean in the winter? I, yeah. And and you can't even store them within the shoreline zone according to the shoreline rules. So but yeah, no, if it's, when they take that out, the pier is permanent, but the gangway and the float will be taken out. Um, the pier obviously requires direct access to the water because that's the purpose of the pier and the gangway. Um, this is not, this is untitled water, can't have new, it's both harder to have a new pier on title, a non-title water. Um, not allowed to build a residential dwelling on the pier and no structure is being proposed on, there's also a height limit twenty feet above. It doesn't conflict with any of that. So you know, my review and my recommendation is basically, I think this can be approved. That that's, of course, your decision. And if you have any other questions, I've got the applications here.
Well, Mr. Chairman, whenever you want to move, I'm prepared.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the acceptance at Westview Pecans for the described structure.
One second.
I seconded.
Although in favor. Although opposed. There you go.
I assume it was, I wasn't looking. That was five, nothing.
Yeah.
Great. Then that passes and I will have that ready for you to sign at the next meeting. Um, okay, Ledgewood Court, I think this is the last thing on the, oh, well, it's not, it's not, but everything else will be pretty quick, I hope.
Oh, I saw that.
The Ledgewood Court, they I think it's, it's good news, there's, I mean, I don't know if it's bad news. They cannot the funding they're seeking will not allow them to restrict the age of the proposed apartments to fifty-five and up because of fair housing and they're, they're they're trying to bundle rehab of the existing Ledgewood Court property with funding with their application to get funding to build the new apartments. So good news, they're going to try and reinvest and rehab the units at Ledgewood Court that already exist. And I've, and I've had them on the phone with the fire department with John Roberts about trying to get like the smoke detectors hardwired and connected to the fire department and things like that. We can't make them do anything, but they're the conversations we're having with them were the new apartments. I just met with John Roberts the other day and he basically gave his blessing. So they're, they should be good to go to get there to trying to apply for funding. And we also made a couple of requests for the old one to, I don't know, improve the fire safety. So the, the conversation that I had with the developer and just my read on it is there's nothing in the original approval from the town from the planning board that says it has to be fifty-five and up. We don't really have a, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to do this. That is what was originally approved. But it seems like there, it wasn't like you can only do this if it's fifty-five plus. So my, what I'm just recommending to the board is that you all say like, yes, great. We understand that it's not going to be legally age restricted. Their intention is still to kind of target an older demographic and the, the units are relatively, they're smaller and it'll probably, you know, mostly be people who are, you know, a bit older, but
But it could be workforce housing too.
It could also be, yeah. So it will still be, I believe it's still going to be, it is going to be affordable. That's the funding they're going for. So they will enforce the affordable component of that. But that's, I mean, my memo basically said
Nothing of the footprint changes or anything like that. It just
Yeah, the only changes that are being discussed right now. Chief Roberts may want the stairwells at either end to be a little bit bigger to provide space to shelter in place if there is a fire. But they're not changing anything significant. Nothing that I think anybody would, would, would notice. And I'll, once we get to that point, I will be happy to bring all of that to you, but the changes that we're talking about are mostly like hardwired smoke detectors and
So we don't even have to really give an approval because it's really not part of the application that it be a, that it has to be a over fifty-five or
Right. Mostly what they wanted was some acknowledgement from the town. I told them, I, I think I could probably write a, a letter about, you know, saying, yes, we know, but I wanted to make sure that I ran it by you and that you were all cool with it. So
When's that permit expire?
We we asked you Yeah, so
If they come back, I mean, I as long as they don't change anything, I extend it again.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't make any specific changes in the plans themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, and I'm working through this with, with Chief Roberts now is like and trying to figure out how this process is going to work when the planning board approves something. There are some changes that he wants. Again, like I said, most of them are are minor and they're more like the technical building stuff, like having a standpipe for and like what the actual connection for the sprinklers is and things like that, which is much more building code rather than planning code, but I'm working that process out with him. I'm doing it here and in Newcastle, not with him in Newcastle, but I'll, when we get more, when we make more progress on that, I'll fill you in so that
So should we like have a, just maybe vote like a resolution or
Oh, we, we don't have anything. You see, it is still working out the details. We can say, yes, we have acknowledged that they've come to us and not going to do that restriction that they talked about.
Right.
But other than that, there's nothing to
That's, yeah.
The details are still being worked out. I mean, it may be something next month, but
Yeah, no, as long as, as long as you don't have any issue with it, I'll write a letter saying, yeah, we know about it and great. Um, so I can do that. I think then the last thing I just want to make sure that I'm not, you know, telling people things are okay, that the planning board doesn't actually think are okay. The last item, oh, is the, and you, you've seen this, I just want to, the shoreline zoning ordinance. Neil, you asked me at the beginning of a meeting what was going on with what used to be like an attorney's office that's next to Farnolds on the river.
Yeah.
Because they had come and they had asked if they could put it was, it was like eleven apartments they wanted to put in there. Yeah. Which, yeah, was a lot in there, but and the, it couldn't be approved because shoreline zoning, I think it was still like one unit per ten thousand square feet or something. They have two currently. They had two. How, you know, I don't know, like before my time. But the conversation that we had following that was, yeah, we should amend our shoreline zoning at least to be consistent with what's allowed in the land use ordinance for the downtown. And so what, because we're, we have sewer in there, we, we can allow more density than is other, like the normal shoreline is like one unit per thirty thousand square feet. So that's what is currently allowed there. What I'm proposing here was lots within the commercial district, well, to make some changes that would allow minimum lot size five thousand square feet, which will be consistent with the land use ordinance. And as long as they're on as long as they're on sewer same would be forty dwelling units per acres. That's too much?
That's just really no.
Okay, what, what?
Not, not in the shoreline zone, not right there.
Not right there, okay.
Because I've seen, I've seen that scenario play out in, in communities where you have the big apartment building looming over the river.
Well, then that's, and so this, I mean, it wouldn't be, I don't think a, a large apartment building looming over the, the river there because I think that was point one, it was like point one, one acres. So
It's tiny.
Which I don't even, yeah, so I don't, they would basically be allowed to do right. Okay, so now that you're all watching me, yeah, I'm panicking.
I don't, I, I have to really think on this. I have to, I'm not really sure.
I just want to
I understand, you know, the need to make things consistent with the land use ordinance.
And, and, and we don't, we don't need, it doesn't need to be consistent. I mean, the, the shoreline district is a, is a different thing. So it is a different context. It makes perfect sense in in some cases for it to not be consistent or to be more restrictive. Absolutely. All of the shoreline regulations will still apply. But when I was looking at this
I mean, just because it's sewered, I mean, there's a lot of land along the river, actually.
So I think even with, like what they proposed was eleven units, if, and if I'm remembering correctly, and they really only have point one, one acres, they would only be allowed to do four units.
Which would be settling pretty good with the parking because the parking is not included in that, it's going to create a problem.
And, and right, you still do, I, I did clarify what the parking standards were and in the, the other one, so
So right now they have two apartments
They have two.
And a commercial office.
I think they had point one, one, but I don't quote me on that because when it turns out that they actually had half an acre and
They don't have half.
I don't think they do, but
And part of it's there's a right of
And there's a right of way right through it too.
Right.
Yeah, that they don't quite acknowledge it for, but I don't know if that's true.
No, that's, that is private matter. So that's, so anyway, that's where the, the forty came from there is like, again, if you've got, you know, an eighth of an acre. And you're allowed to do forty units an acre, you could put five units. So that, that's where that, and I understand like, and the reason I say forty units an acre rather than like one per so many square feet is just because like that's just density tends to be, it's just an easier right, that's the, that, that is a density downtown, so.
But that would be appropriate for that size building to have four in that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think it'd be actually pretty nice.
And I, one thing I will say is that building, if, if that wasn't there, they wouldn't be able to build it that close to the water again, unless there was going to be some kind of water dependent use, but like, they are
I think they did it to take you for the ordinance.
Yeah. So
I, I think they did it despite the ordinance.
Oh, no, no, they did it before.
Before?
At least the day before.
Yeah.
But I, I do want to, I want to, I want to bring this up with you so that I can send it to the select board to ask them to, so we can have a public hearing about it and try to make that change. But so if forty units an acre is not the, the density that's, that's good.
I mean, it works for this particular little lot and this building, but let's, and is this just general residential?
It's, no, this would just be the commercial, just in the downtown. Well, it's, it's the shoreline district, sort of shoreline district, which is only in downtown.
I mean, you can send it to the selectmen, but I mean, I, I'm just
Well, what I want to, to send to the select board is something that you all like.
I'm just trying to think of other lots.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and I'm a dislike.
Do you, I mean, do you want, I can put it down to like thirty, thirty-five, we can
I know that this is right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm worried.
Okay.
Okay, I'm unsure.
Okay.
About that.
Well, that's Let me ask you a technical question. Let's say if you took it down to you were at forty, what if you took it to twenty, that building will only be able to have two apartments.
That's, well, again, and I wish I had that.
But the answer you got to remember, guys, is that it's the size of law. So there's no lots down there that are an acre.
No, right.
So you couldn't put forty to start with.
Right.
Unless you buy multiple pieces of land to get an acre there, you're never going to put forty in a building.
It's only in the, that particular district, the downtown district.
Right, right.
So you're, you're never going to get that forty number. Jenny, and I think that's what you're focusing on is forty per that acre.
Yeah.
And but you got to do like, like his math really simple as it out is for that lot down there, just before the bridge, you can only put four in that per that forty per acre.
Yeah.
So you got to keep So you got to keep the lot size in mind when you're thinking about that, yes, the forty is a scary number. But nowhere down there, you're gonna get enough land to put forty units in a building.
Just that district. I'm good.
Okay, I and I think that that to to your point, and this is why, like, just regulating density is not always the the most effective, like. We, forty units an acre might be the right density, but forty units in one building is, I don't think anybody wants that. So what we need to do is make something that say, that says like, you can do forty units an acre as long as you don't. Put more than like eight units in a building or, you know, ten, we, I don't know what the number is going to be. Because then you you get the density and the form that I think everybody.
Cause you got, you've got more units in buildings down there right across the road than what's in that one, or what they could put in that one.
Yeah.
But we're talking about the shoreline zone.
Yeah, well, yeah, but so is the the buildings right there, the day block, that's still in the shoreline zone, and there's a lot more. Units in that building there is in the one we're talking about.
Yeah, most, most of the downtown is, like the, like the middle of the road maybe is. So.
Okay, I'm backing off from being.
You're taking out the disc?
May, you know, neutral.
That that, yeah, no, but I and I think, you know, having concerns is.
And again, it's a starting point, it's nothing saying that it's cast in stones.
Right, right.
And I'm thinking about other, I do know some, you know, larger lots in that area, but.
And and this is, we still have the land use ordinance that controls and we still have. It's only in that, you still have to park it, you still have to do all that, I mean. And yeah, yeah, which is the another issue is like, we need to start saying like, if you are in a flood hazard area. Which all of downtown is essentially, you can't have apartments. Below that, you need to be above the flood hazard, like people's apartments should not be getting. But it's one thing if, you know, you get a retail store down there and you lose inventory, like. That that's that's bad, but it's not, doesn't make you homeless. So.
Right.
I'll stop, um, is there anything?
And then the other piece of that is maybe the. Utility or the major utility shouldn't be down there either.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Panels that run the entire building because then you've got thirty people homeless because that's underwater.
Right, right, because.
Then there.
Or it catches on fire.
Correct, right. Correct.
Right.
You, are you, uh.
So.
Thinking of a specific.
No.
Possibly.
That's actually happened a few times.
Yeah.
In fact, I think, honestly, I think that's what burns cooled it down. Well, I mean, I've done that building a million times and just. Cables and wires hanging everywhere and, you know. They get nicks, you know, in the casing, saltwater gets in there, you get corrosion. I mean, I don't know, nobody knows what.
Well, it's no surprise that it went underwater twice, right? We know that, we got pictures of that, you know.
Independent to that building been underwater a lot of times.
Right.
I mean, there's unsheathed cable down there, there's. You know, if it wasn't wiring.
Had to say.
I would be amazed, but you know what? I'm not a pro on that, I'm just, I want to see.
I I can tell you, Scott, the owner was in today and I I spoke with him and he mentioned that the the. Fire marshal, state fire marshal is still, still investigating, trying to figure out what all the cause was and. Um, but they are trying to get temporary power at least back to the site. Um, and I know they're they're working towards figuring out like a longer term.
Right.
Uh, solution, so, so that's good, and I I've.
Before ninety-eight?
That it in the seventies.
Thirty years ago, January.
Yeah.
There was an article in the Lincoln County News about the last. Past iterations.
Randy Donigan had.
Donigan, yes, and then, but and Myers, when it was saltwater farms burned down.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Um, now I just have two, a couple other pieces that I just wanted to let you know, um.
Get a consensus.
Oh, on the shoreline, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send that to, I'll take it to the slot board and. You know, we'll see, we'll see how that goes over with them and then maybe there'll be a public hearing. The. Comp plan, I have a meeting tomorrow, uh, to regroup and then hopefully another meeting in. Two weeks, I forgot, you're you're on it too, I haven't seen you and Dan in a while. Um, but we're going to hopefully be moving that forward, uh, there's been some wordsmithing, but. Um, I think that the intent of it is still essentially the same, the formatting is. You know, what you've already seen, and I think I mentioned that, um. Possibly a special town meeting in the fall sometime, hopefully to get that voted on, hopefully approved.
So is is that meeting tomorrow?
Yes. Yeah, um. Yes, should be five thirty here.
Is it in the, um. On the town calendar?
I believe the event is, yes, because I put them on there.
Okay.
I just put them on tomorrow and then there's one in two weeks, uh, because Mary and Adam are out of town right now and. They've been doing a lot of the work recently, so we're just going to discuss. Hopefully, uh, timeline, the other thing I wanted to, oh, um, and then also. The Skidhamphal Library, they owned the Coffin Building, uh, they. They wanted to be confirmed that dissolving the condo association that was there essentially, like the Coffin Building was a condo. It's the white building that's in front of.
But between the library and the. The old library.
It's where.
That was owned by.
It. Apparently it was owned by the library. And they just. There, I guess there was a condo associate, like, they wanted to dissolve the kind of associations at the library, is the library and the coffin building is the coffin building.
How would that make you a different stuff?
It it, that's exactly what I put in the.
You know, where they, you know, they kind of go, they kind of, one goes over the other, like they're occupying the same space, that's probably why they.
I think so, and I and I don't know exactly the detail, but I just, I wrote a letter to them, and I mean, I'm discussing with Andy and let them know, like. Yeah, you can dissolve the condo, but I just wanted to mention that to you.
Um, but but I think it.
I don't know, I mean, the ownership, what they showed me was, like, I think it was like the Skidhamphal Library, so Public Library Association. Owned. Both. And then there were condos, I I. When I say condo, it was just, because there was shared maintenance and.
That building.
Who?
Rob Flory, Flory, didn't he own? That building?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I always felt liberated, but.
So I think that if they haven't sold it, they're moving forward with a sale on that, but you've seen, I'm sure, the for sale signs, so. Uh, that's it, then I got nothing else on this stuff.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
One second. Okay.